Our City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1460. We start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving to the agenda, starting with item number one, is the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark. Harrison. Holt. Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All right, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Harrison, Clark, and Vice Mayor Holt.
Like to make a motion to excuse Councilmembers Clark and Harrison from today's meeting.
You want to include Holt?
Yeah, do you want to include?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, yes, yes. And Vice Mayor Holt.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, this can be a voice vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Vice Mayor Holt and Councilmembers Clark and Harris are both excused. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or corrections to be made? All right, hearing none. We're gonna move on to presentations. And it looks like we are joined by some students from our wonderful Witten Woods School District. Does everyone want to come up and introduce themselves at the podium? Just one by one, if you all want to come up and speak your name, or you're just here just to observe. You don't have to be shy. Yeah, go ahead. Tell us your name and what organization this is.
My name is Damarien Chambers, and I am a part of the Witten Woods High School Student Council. So, yeah, we are here tonight for cause of the Student Council.
All right, anybody else want to come up and address council? Yeah, go ahead. Don't be shy.
I'm Dmitri, I'm Dmitri Bernworth. I'm a part of Student Council, former secretary. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Poet Bullocks, and I am a student representative at Witten Woods Student Council.
Welcome.
If you'll join us.
Hi, I'm Kennedy Turner. I'm a sophomore at Witten Woods High School, and I am part of Student Council.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Takayla War, and I'm a sophomore at Witten Woods.
Welcome for coming. Thank you for coming.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Naliashia Baber. I am a junior at Witten Woods and a part of Student Council.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Phillips, and I am a part of Student Council, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name is London Shong, and I am a freshman in the Student Council.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to introduce himself? For those of you who just came in, we are asking about Student Council. If you want to come up to the podium and state your name and address council, you're free to do so. No pressure, you don't have to.
But we would like for you to. I believe in you.
I'm sorry, I'm sweaty right now because I just got back from walk-in, but my name is Unija. Um, and you said, what else?
You could just introduce yourself to council.
Oh, yeah, well, my name is Unija.
Maybe your role in the organization?
Yeah, I want to be a class representative.
Welcome.
Very good, very good.
All right, anyone else like to come up? All right, no pressure, you don't have to. All right, um, so are we gonna hear any words from any parents or any student representative about Student Council? Or you're just here to observe? Don't everybody answer at once? Yeah, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, thank you. Our council would just like to observe how your council conducts your meetings, so that we are in ordinance and the same, on the same page as you guys, as our leaders. We want to learn from our leaders how you guys conduct council meetings and the such, and we thank you, but we'd just like to observe.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, each and every one of you. Today is going to be a bit of a condensed meeting, but if you would like to come to another meeting, you're free to do so. We're gonna kind of rip through this agenda quite, quite quickly. The person that you would want to get in touch with as well is our Law Director, John Wykoff. He acts as our parliamentarian, so there are times where I don't, I don't even know exactly what the procedure is, the proper procedure. And we follow what we call Robert's Rules of Order. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And then I'll, I'll state point of order, and then I'll ask John, because he's like an encyclopedia. He has it all memorized. He knows every, every, every step, every detail that I'm supposed to do, so. All right, with that, we're gonna close presentations, but I need a motion to amend the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I motion to amend the agenda in which all items B, C, D, F, H, under new business ordinance number 22-25, 23-25, 24-25, 26-25, and 28-25.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, these items will be on future council agendas.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
All right, motion to amend the agenda passes 4-0. So we are going to withdraw those items, and they will be discussed at a future council meeting. I'm not sure if everyone has a copy of the agenda, but we can go over that after council concludes business. All right, moving on to item number four, this is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So at this point in our agenda, we open the floor up to anyone who is coming to observe. Any question that you have, any concern, anything that's just on your mind, you can address council right now at this time for five minutes. So I know a few of you have given your name, but if you've always had that burning question in the back of your mind, this is the time to address council, because otherwise, it's not gonna happen. So, or you could, I'm joking, you could really always send us an email. So if you would like to address council, please come up to the podium. There should be a sign-in sheet up there. Hey, Joy! There should be a sign-in sheet up there. So then you just state your name, your address, and then you have five minutes to address council. Yes, ma'am.
Pretty young lady to help me, she's so sweet. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kelly Gunnels Vaylines. I am part of the Westchester Community, but we are hosting a blood drive in memory of my brother Rico Gunnels Senior that will be held on October the 4th. It will be held at your library, your new library, on Northland, 616 Northland. I did bring a picture of my brother. I think a picture says a lot. So we have been hosting this blood drive for seven years. My brother Rico, thank you for doing that. I did bring flyers. So my brother, this blood drive started in the community of Abendale. My brother is a gunshot victim. I'm dressed for work, my apologies, but I will be leaving here going to UC. I work at UC at night. My sister here, thank you for inviting me. Councilwoman Trevina Adams, she's also part of 513, and for the last three years out of the seven, she has been a part of our event in memory of my brother for hope, for peace, and to restore some, some unity and family in the community, okay? Which is broken. My son thought this would be an amazing place, and it is, to do a blood drive. He's a truancy officer. And so he thought that this would be a place where we could touch others, as my brother did when he was living in the community for 14 years, the last 14 years of his life. So I did bring flyers. Want to invite council, everyone here, to come out, roll your sleeves up, sign up to support this blood drive. We want to come back every year. We've been very welcomed by Mr. Shawn at the library and the whole staff in the community here. And so I do have flyers, I can leave those with you if you like, okay?
Absolutely.
We would love your support.
Yeah, please circulate that flyer with our clerk, and then she'll, you can just pass it to council as well. But we'll make sure, we can even get it out into the newsletter whenever the next iteration comes.
Yes, ma'am. And I will sign in here.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, save it for later. We do thank you for hosting this out here, and I'm, first of all, I'm sorry for your loss, but we do commend you for turning this tragedy into such a wonderful opportunity to give back to the community. So we thank you for that.
Thank you. I don't take the credit, I'm just a shout of the king.
Yeah.
I'm used.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate it, it's the way we've healed, our families, the way we've healed. So I thank you. Do we have a pen?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Is it okay to ask if one has any questions?
Yeah, does any, anyone on council have any questions?
What's the time?
The time is, it starts at nine. It will be until 2:45. And in the, in the afternoon, we will have food, we'll have games, we'll have vendors that will be there as well, and a DJ. We always have a DJ, we all always have a family time, okay? Young people can donate, but you have to have parents, because then if you are 16, you're under 18, okay? And you would just acknowledge the link there, the code, you just click on that, it brings up all the times that you can sign up.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from council? All right, well, thank you, Ms. Gunnels.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing. Yes, ma'am.
All right, communications from the public is still open. If anyone would like to come up and address council, any questions? I know you got a question. Yes, you do. All right, and with that, item number four is closed, so we're gonna move on to item number five, which is reports from council members. And we're gonna start with Councilmember Adams.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, and hello to all the beautiful young people that are sitting here in the audience today. I don't have anything in particular except for, I'm really excited, the beautification committee will be resuming on Wednesday, September the 17th, for our meetings, and then we have, we are just extremely happy to be partnering with the planning committee for the volunteer lunch dinner, and we're gonna be decorating the table, so we're very happy to do that. We serve in so many other ways. If there are any young people in the audience that are interested in agriculture, we would love to have you. We do more than plant flowers, though, but we would love to have you participate with us in that. Also, too, I think after the fact, we had done the Black Men's Wellness Event, and we did not have a council meeting, I don't believe, after that, so I wasn't able to share with that, but we had a phenomenal turnout for that, very happy about that. And some of the members of the beautification committee did come out to volunteer for that, as well with the Quality of Life Commission, but I'll let Dr. Moore expound more on that. But other than that, Mayor, I don't have anything else to share.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. Do you have any work session items?
No, sir, not at this exact time, I do not, so thank you.
All right, moving on to second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to City Council. So it's been an exciting summer here. We continue to put in the work regarding quality of life for our residents, and welcome back, council. We've been out for a while on recess. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I had an opportunity to celebrate with TSQ Organization. They had a celebration at the Forest Park Library this past weekend, and there were vendors and music and presentations to celebrate the amazing diversity in our community. I also had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony for the New Boys and Girls Club at the Witten Woods School District, and so for the past, well, actually, two years ago, Crystal Kendrick, myself, Dr. Raglan, and Dr. Adrian Martin. You guys recognize some of those names? Okay, former board member Deborah Bryant, and then former superintendent Mr. Smith. We had a roundtable, and we wanted to discuss how to partner to service our youth in our community. And as a result, Crystal worked very hard with the Hamilton County Boys, I mean, Hamilton, Ohio Boys and Girls Club to pave the way for a new Witten Woods Boys and Girls Club here in our community. As a result, 75,000 was our partnership. That was based on a grant of a $200,000 grant called Project Reach, and it helped kick off that program. So it was amazing to see the students and spend time with them last week, and I hope that they have a wonderful, wonderful experience with the new Boys and Girls Program. Also, on October the 28th, the Witten Woods School District invited leaders in the community to have a roundtable conversation on how to discuss community engagement. It was a very productive meeting. We had faith, faith leaders, we had the fire department, we had Forest Park citizens, Health Connection, PTA, Witten Woods Athletic Boosters and businesses to come together to see how can we support Witten Woods School District, and how do we tell our story, right? Tell our story. We're a great district, we're a great community, and how do we tell our story? And lastly, please keep your eyes out for the new Forest Park We Thrive, We Thrive Health van. The van is under renovation, but it, once it's ready, we're gonna be out in the community doing outreach and events, and so we're really excited about all the quality of life that is occurring here for our residents. That completes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. And do you have any work session items to add?
No, I do not.
All right, then moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mayor, and good evening to Forest Park and our residents, and those that are present here this evening, Witten Woods students. We are encouraged and thank you for being here. We have been on our recess and missed out on the opportunity of going through that last walkthrough for our Cincinnati Mall before it's tear down, but I do have good memories of being a part of that mall back in its glory days. But as Councilwoman Moore spoke on our ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting event that took place at Witten Woods, that was a great event. It was nice to see the collaboration, not only from our city and its support with the school, but just seeing the enthusiasm of the kids and just knowing that that's, that's a great program. I'm really encouraged, and I want you, you guys, to take your best foot forward. Take, take this opportunity, because it will advance you and help you as you move and stage through your life. So take this opportunity and take it with, with the point of goal that it can present to you. So I'm encouraged to see you here. Let us know that we, that we have an ongoing future for the City of Forest Park. So stay encouraged and keep doing the right thing.
Amen.
With that, Mayor, I don't have any other comments or anything to add to the agenda.
Work session, okay. All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. That concludes item number five. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. So as Councilmember Sylvester and Dr. Moore stated, that we did attend the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Boys and Girls Club in partnership with the school district, so we are very excited about that and the number of students who have already signed up. So parents, if you are looking for another after-school activity for your children, there are plenty of extracurriculars, but do sign them up for the Boys and Girls Club, and we do wish them all the success. And we are, this is the first meeting that we've had since returning from recess, so if residents are not aware already, Forest, well, Cincinnati Mills Mall is coming down, so we did go through a, we did a final walkthrough. Demolition has already begun. O'Rourke is in there tearing things up. And there, there will be a crane outside. They didn't give us the exact timeline on that, Don, but the crane will come outside soon, and we'll start to see the exterior structure go down. But this presents a wonderful opportunity for new growth and development for the city, especially at our main entry point, a main thoroughfare as well. And the City of Forest Park is retaining its largest employer, which is the Hillman Group, which they will build a corporate campus there and leaving another 20 or so acres for future development. So it's just a very exciting time in the City of Forest Park, considering that mall has been vacant for a number of years, and, you know, not only just dying, but dead, completely dead for several, several years. So it's a very exciting opportunity for the City of Forest Park. With that, I do want to thank the city and their leadership. Don, good job for all the negotiations, because I know it took a long time. It was a three-year process where we were sitting down, we talked to the current, well, the former owner now, a few times. And then we do thank Hillwood for their partnership as well, for coming into the city and seeing the vision or the potential of the area. As a few other things on my agenda, the Planning Commission actually just approved a variance for Witten Woods High School. They're actually redoing their baseball field. I got to see a few of the schematics, it looks really nice, the field's gonna be really nice, but we had to do a variance because they're going to extend the size of the fence up to 35 feet in height, just about 400 yards back to protect some of the neighbors that are closest to the baseball field, because we don't want anybody, if we had any Ken Griffys, you know, get a fly ball out there. I mean, a 400-yard homer would be impressive for a high school student, but, but I do want to commend the, the school district for their foresight, and the Planning Commission did approve that. And with that, oh, we do have a few events coming up. Even though summer is over, the next event, I believe, will be Harvest Fest, which will be October 4th, and it'll be in Central Park. This will be the second year that we had in Central Park. Traditionally, Harvest Fest was in, around the fire station, in and around the fire station, but as it's grown in popularity, I believe we had about 1,500 people or so in attendance last year in Central Park, and it was very, it was very well-intended. It was a very fun event. So please come out October 4th to attend Harvest Fest. And the last thing that I'll say is, I am going to be receiving the Theodore Barry Award from the Cincinnati NAACP. Thank you. That, that same day on October 4th, and that ceremony, the Cincinnati NAACP has the Freedom Fund Gala every year, and that will be, so that's October 4th, and I believe it starts at 7:00 PM. With that, that concludes my report, but to the work session, I will add, Don, I'm going to request that we do a report from Parks and Recreation on the number of community events that we had in the summer, and I would like to know attendance numbers as well, because I believe this was another record year. I think for the last three years, we've continued to break records, especially in our largest event, Jazz in the Park. So I know last year was about 7,000 people, and I believe that we broke that this year. We pretty, I'm sure we broke that this year. Takea, would you say that we surpassed about over, well over 7,000? Because this was the largest tent rental. Okay, so I think it's good for everyone to know that our events are very popular, and that nobody does summer like Forest Park. So that's something that we should, we should really get the metrics on that, Don. And then the other thing I'll add to the work session item is another conversation around attendance. And with that, that'll conclude my report. So I'm gonna move on to item number seven, which is the City's Managers' Report. We're gonna hear from Mr. Don Jones.
Well, thank you, and congratulations on that award, Mayor. It's quite an honor for yourself, but also for the City of Forest Park as well.
I'm the second mayor to win it, because Mayor Johnson won it about, I think, four years ago.
Oh, that's great, that's great. So we keep it in the family. Getting back to the Boys and Girls Clubs, because we have a lot of young folks here, it is a tremendous success, and there is a waiting list now. And so I want to remind everyone that if you're out there and you're listening, or you're retired, or you just want a part-time job or something after-school to work with kids, retired teachers in general, or even current teachers, we're looking for more people. The only thing holding this thing back is the, is the mentors and instructors that, that we need to, to just have more programs and have more kids, because we want to keep the ratio right. We don't want to have, you know, 100 kids in one person, so. We keep the ratio right in order to have more kids, we just, you know, it's funded, we just need more, more adults. So if you've got some time, you want to mentor some kids, you want to volunteer, you want to get paid, there's paid positions as well, give us a call, we'll put you, we'll put you in touch with the right folks at the Boys and Girls Club, so keep that in mind. Also, you folks here, the young kids here, don't forget about the ability to do community service as well through the city. We have a lot of volunteer opportunities, and I know you guys have a certain amount of hours you're supposed to get done, so you could really help us out with volunteering here at the city and doing some things, even working on the summer with some of these programs that we have and some of these events that we're gonna talk about here. So again, keep that in mind as you go through the year. It's a good opportunity to get your community service hours in here at the City of Forest Park. The mall is coming down, everything is now paid off. It is under private ownership now of a developer. It should start here, we've been told that tomorrow is really the last day to, to do anything there, if we wanted to get in there and do anything. The, and we are, going back for another run-through. But the, the bottom line is after tomorrow, it is, it'll be officially a demolition zone. So we look forward to seeing that thing hit the ground and new development coming up over the next year, so. That's a good thing for the city, it shows that we're growing and we're moving forward. Couple of events coming up Saturday, the 20th, that's this coming weekend, we're bringing back our Gospel Fest, another great event here with the city. It's at the Red Door Church, and again, that'll be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Come on down, and it's gonna be a great event. And Waycross Media, I've heard tonight, is gonna be able to, they're gonna be able to show that live on a couple of their channels, so keep an eye out for that, we'll be giving more information about the channels and where you can watch it, but don't watch it, just come on down and enjoy it. Again, it's only two hours on a Saturday, come on down to the Red, the Red Door Church. Our Environmental Department has a lot of events throughout the year, but Saturday, the 27th, is a paper shredding and tire collection event. So if you've got an old tire laying around in your, in your garage, somewhere out there, and you just don't know what to do with it, bring it down there, they'll take them, and we'll make sure that they're environmentally, that they're recycled properly in an environmentally sound way. Also, if you've got a whole bunch of papers and been sitting around and you're wondering what to do with it, bring it down there. They will, they'll take it, and they'll shred it up for you, so. Good opportunity to kind of clean those, do a little spring cleaning, but we'll call it fall cleaning. Harvest Fest is coming up on the 4th, as the mayor said, we'd be train, we moved it to the Central Park, because we have free train rides, petting zoo this year, kids crafts and games, fire and police programs, food trucks, community vendors. It can be a lot of fun, and it was our biggest, our biggest fall fest ever at, at our Harvest Festival. So we, we hope to have even more, more folks there this year. Again, that's Saturday, the October 4th, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. You can go donate some blood, and then come on down to the Harvest Fest. And then the, again, it's an annual event here, the Homecoming Parade is September 26th, Friday. Starts at 5:30, you'll be running down the, the regular route through, down Waycross to the schools, so let's line those, let's line that parade route and have a lot of fun, and we hope to see everybody have a great time. It's a, it's a big event here in the city, and again, it's the 26th, Friday, it starts about 5:30. And other than that, Mayor, I would ask that, that we have a special meeting on the, a good time, maybe we'll figure out a good time, but on the, this coming Monday, have a special meeting to take care of some, some pending business that we need to take care of before the end of the month, and have an official council meeting on, on this coming Monday.
Okay. That would be the 22nd, I believe.
Yeah, it's a part of, we can do it in conjunction with the, the regular work session.
Yeah, okay.
That's 9:22?
9:22, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
So it'll be our work session, but we'll have to restructure it.
No problem.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Don.
Any questions, I'll be glad to answer that, anything.
All right, that concludes item number seven. Moving on to item number eight, which are other reports. We're gonna hear from our Law Director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the items I've been working on was included a public records request submitted to the Police Department. It was a little complex, because it involved a juvenile charge with felonious assault. Also reviewed a memorandum of understanding regarding uniform allowance for the Fire Department in response to an inquiry by Andy Levinduski. Also reviewed the proposed memorandum of offer to purchase real estate here in the City of Forest Park. And I got this really cool certificate, because I had to sit through the Criminal Justice Information Services Security and Privacy Training Course and then take a test, which I got 100%. and then take a test, which I got a hundred percent on. Uh, that is because, as prosecutor for the city, I have access to certain information that is generated nationwide by the FBI and our own police departments. And so, to pass this, security allows me to be in secured areas and look at secured documents. Also, for Chris Lewis, I looked at the proposed rental registration ordinances and proposed some changes, so we could get those before council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, I also, for our parliamentary people here from the high school, you have to have a quorum to vote on certain ordinances, and I advised Ms. Bailey today that if it is a standard ordinance, not an emergency ordinance, we need a simple majority, and that's what we have tonight, four out of seven. But if you have either an emergency ordinance or the need to make a motion to pass an ordinance on only one reading, then you need a supermajority, which in this case would be three-fourths of our council. So, we'd have to be up to five people. So, on our agenda, we've withdrawn some of the ordinance because of the fact they were emergency ordinances, and we don't have enough council people here tonight to address that. That is the end of my report, Lister, any questions?
All right, any questions for our law director? Thank you for that, that, John, that was very thorough. I told you, he's an encyclopedia, see, that's, that's why we don't, we don't have all the members present, and we need at least five, but. So, with that, we're gonna move to our other report from our clerk of council, Mr. Kia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers twenty-dash twenty-twenty-five, twenty-five-dash twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-seven-dash twenty-twenty-five, as well as resolution number thirty-three-dash twenty-twenty-five, was posted as required, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders, and I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the second time by title only ordinance number twenty-dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Yes, this ordinance was posted six days prior to today's meeting.
Thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes four-zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number twenty-dash twenty-twenty-five by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-dash twenty-twenty-five, declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be a public purpose under section five-seven-zero-nine-point-four-zero of the Ohio Revised Code, Halesworth Incentive District TIF, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. So, this ordinance establishes the Halesworth Incentive District TIF, declaring future improvements to the area of public purpose and exempting a hundred percent of those improvements from the property taxes for up to thirty years. In lieu of taxes, owners will make service payments deposited into a dedicated tax increment equivalent fund to finance public infrastructure serving the site, such as streets, utilities, or a community center. The ordinance also provides full school compensation to the local school district and career center. This is actually the old Forest View site. In order, once a school, a elementary school is closed within the district, the school actually raises it. And they have sold this to a, this particular lot to a developer. This will be about forty-six new duplex homes coming to the city of Forest Park. So, we do want that density, and we do want new residents, 'cause new residents generate additional income tax dollars, which pays for city services. And with that, I urge adoption. So, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Ordinance number twenty-dash twenty-twenty-five passes four-zero, and that concludes unfinished business. Moving on to item number ten, which is new business, and I need another motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the first time by title only ordinance number twenty-five-dash twenty-twenty-five and twenty-seven-dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is there any further discussion, Dr. Moore?
Yes, these ordinances were posted six days prior to today's meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes four-zero. And again, if you are following along on the agenda, students, ordinances number twenty-two-dash twenty-twenty-five, twenty-three-dash twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-four-dash twenty-twenty-five have been withdrawn, and we will vote on those at a future council meeting. So, will the clerk? Whoa, sorry, I guess this is Councilmember Sylvester, is there a motion?
I gotta read it.
You gotta read it, yeah.
I gotta read the title.
Oh, yeah, you do have to read it, okay, go ahead.
Ordinance number twenty-five-dash twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance amending appropriation for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Forest Park, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, thank you, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-five-dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, this budget reappropriation addresses several allocations to cover fire department needs, insurance deductibles, community event costs, street light repairs, and professional services for grants. Adjustments ensure continued operation and support for the public safety, infrastructure, and community programs. So, with that, I move for the ordinance number twenty-five-dash twenty-twenty-five.
All right, thank you for that, council member. Now, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number twenty-five-dash twenty-twenty-five passes four-zero. Now, this will, next one will be a first reading. Will the clerk please read ordinance number twenty-seven-dash twenty-twenty-five by title only?
Ordinance number twenty-seven-dash twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance amending sections one-five-five-point-one-nine, one-five-five-point-nine-nine, and one-five-six-point-one-five of the Forest Park codified ordinances.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. This is a first reading, so we will not be voting on this today. Now, I need another motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the first time by title only, resolution numbers thirty-four-dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Yes, this resolution was posted six days prior to today's meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Moore. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes four-zero. Now, will the clerk please read resolution number thirty-four-dash twenty-twenty-five by title only?
Resolution number thirty-four-dash twenty-twenty-five, a resolution adopted, adopting updated bylaws for the Economic Development Commission.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I move to adopt resolution number thirty-four-dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. So, the city of Forest Park is updating the outdated nineteen-eighty-two operating rules for the Economic Development Commission to better reflect current practices and goals. The existing bylaws under section thirty-seven dot zero-six are hereby replaced as outlined in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. Just for the audience, the city has a number of commissions relating to different activities that we do. So, economic development pertains to business in particular. So, that's about job creation, job retention, things of that nature. We have a committee of individuals who are volunteers, along with a representative from city council, to sit on that committee, and the bylaws are essentially the, the rules in which they operate or how they conduct business. But we also, in addition to that, you heard me mention earlier, we have a planning commission, we have a Parks and Recreation Committee, we have the Beautification Commission, which Councilmember Adams sits, sits on. At any point in time, you can volunteer on city commissions, and you can get a peek under the hood, so to speak. So, anything that you are interested in, if you like parks, if you like recreation, you can volunteer to be on that committee. If you like, you know, business, you can be on that committee. If you want to learn more about planning, about where or how we decide to put homes, 'cause you don't see a, a house next to a gigantic factory, do you? At least not yet. That falls under planning and zoning, so these commissions essentially review that, and they either bless you, bless you again. You going for a record? No, gazoo-tight, no. They make recommendations to council, and council has final approval, except for a few things. But we also have Stormwater and a few other commissions. But I'm a little long-winded, so with that, I would urge adoption. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Resolution number thirty-four-dash twenty-twenty-five passes four-zero. So, now, we are going to move to item number eleven, which is adjournment. Now, is there?
Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah.
Before we adjourn, may I please say something to the students, sir?
Well, you can say something to the students after we adjourn.
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, it was, okay.
Okay. Would you, you wanna explain the, the process?
The, the process of us adjourned?
Oh, or what, what were you gonna say?
I just wanted to read something to them that I just wrote.
Oh, that definitely can wait.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.